All right, good evening, everyone. Today is July 11th, 2022, and I call this Chan-Hassan City Council meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. For the record, we have all of our council members present this evening. Our first action tonight is our agenda approval. Council members, are there any modifications to the agenda as printed? If not, we will proceed with the published agenda. First up, we have public announcements, and we have a very special public announcement tonight to begin with. I am going to ask if Dorina would come forward and join me up here while she receives the Maple Leaf Award. And I'm going to join you down here, Dorina. And I think she should be surrounded by her fellow commissioners and her son. So if all of you would like to join, join us up front, that would be wonderful.
You too, Charmaine.
Charmaine, of course. Let's get the whole word from the center here. I'd like to read a few words, Dorina, to you. Dorina Tipton was appointed to the Senior Commission in April 2012. Although she volunteered her time at numerous city events to serve the public, her most prominent accomplishment was educating the community on the topic of dementia, a disease that does not discriminate. She worked relentlessly with city staff, Carver County staff, and the senior commission members to establish an Alzheimer's Task Force, which included city residents, faith communities, police officers, business owners, and social services organizations. To date, Chan-Hassan is recognized as a member of the dementia-friendly community. Dorina's efforts were instrumental in putting Chan-Hassan on the dementia-friendly community's map. She attended training sessions and became a dementia friend technician. She began training city staff, business and community members, volunteered to publicly speak on the topic, joined caregiver support groups, and advocated to establish the Maple Cafe to host a monthly gathering of people with dementia and their caregivers. Dorina was always present as a volunteer to support this group. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Dorina made personal calls to the caregivers that attended Maple Cafe monthly events to check on them and ask if they needed anything. She delivered memory kits to homes as well. November is Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and each November, Dorina set up a table at the library with brochures. She also left her personal name card for people to contact her with questions in case she wasn't there in person, and she received multiple calls. Dorina's other accomplishments include volunteering at numerous city functions, such as the 3rd of July Business Expo, Memorial Day fundraising for veterans, and many other social and service programs; volunteering at the 4th of July bingo events sponsored by the Senior Commission to benefit veterans; volunteering her time at numerous city events to serve as a greeter, a server, or in any way she might be needed. She educated herself on topics to better serve seniors by attending older adult mental health workshops; walked the trails and sidewalks of the city to make sure the elderly had enough time to cross streets where there weren't traffic signals. Dorina, your support of the city center and the community is large, community at large, is evident, and these are just a few things that you did to make life better and more comfortable for our community. You've been instrumental and invaluable member. The seniors in Chan-Hassan are very fortunate and honored to have you on their team. We love you. Thank you, Dorina. Thank you for being here. We have one more public announcement that isn't on our agenda, but it's a special one as we honor one of our very own council members, Councilmember Jerry McDonald. Surprise, Jerry. We couldn't put it on the agenda, otherwise you would know. Yeah, well, you know. Just the continued embarrassment, right? As many of you know, Councilman McDonald was the 18th Annual Chan-Hassan Rotary's Distinguished Service Award recipient for 2022. Beyond getting the unique opportunity to be the grand marshal in the 4th of July parade, this award is given to a Chan-Hassan resident who has gone above and beyond in their service to others. Service has always been a part of Councilman McDonald's life, from his service to our nation and the U.S. Navy, extensive volunteerism with community organizations in and around Chan-Hassan, and his tenure as a city councilman. He has given much of himself to improve the lives of those around him. Thoughtful, intuitive, willing to challenge and ask the tough questions, Councilman McDonald is known for working behind the scenes to help those in need as he puts action behind his words. He is a friend and a colleague and an excellent councilman. So on behalf of the rest of us on council, congratulations, Jerry. And just so you can remember this day. Congratulations. You have to show the audience.
Yeah, you gotta be kind of smiling, so thank you.
Congratulations on your much deserved award.
Well, I really appreciate it. I had a lot of fun in the parade, and it's just, I just, I'm at a loss for words. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome. Congrats. No more surprises. Or planned surprises, I should say. Next, we have the consent agenda. Tonight, we have consent agenda items D1 through 5. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be recorded as a single motion based on staff recommendation. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Are there any items that the council would like to consider separately? If not, may I get a motion to approve consent agenda items D1 through 5?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items D1 through D5.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries 5-0. Next is visitor presentation. Visitor presentations are included with each of our regularly scheduled council meetings. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter that is not specifically on the agenda may step to the podium. Please provide your name and address for the record, and then please address the council. You will have five minutes to present your item. If your request includes an action item from either staff or council, please complete a citizen action request form so that we may appropriately follow up with your item. If you are simply making a comment with no required action, a form does not need to be completed. Please know that we do not take up items that are brought forward during the visitor presentations at our meeting tonight. And if you have any handouts to share with council, please hand them to one of our staff members. Is there anyone here this evening that wants to come forward for visitor presentations for a topic that is not on the agenda? Okay. With that, we will move forward with the public hearings tonight. We have two of them, and the first one is the final plat for the Goodman Homestead and the vacation of a portion of the public drainage and utility easement. Mr. Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. It has been some time since I presented formally in front of the council, so I just want to introduce myself, Mayor Hendrickson. I'm the project engineer with the city here and representing the engineering department on this one. There we go. The case in front of you today is planning case number 2022-08. This is a request from the applicant John Goodman for the replating of some property or a subdivision, as well as a public hearing for a vacation of a public drainage and utility easement. The property is located at 915 Pleasant View Road. The combination would be of Lot 1, Block 1 of Edwards Vogel Edition with Outlot A Vinewood Edition. This property and properties are a Zoned Single Family Residential and are guided low-density residential, low-density. The existing site is a single-family home that is serviced adequately by this public sewer and water. There is no proposals to change any of the municipal services with the subdivision. Again, this is a lot combination essentially, not a subdivision of additional lots. It is also adequately serviced with the driveway, and there's no proposal to change that either. The subdivision, as previously addressed, is again the combination of Outlot A with Block 1, Lot 1. The impetus for the request was the applicant consulted with staff to construct a storage shed, and the location would have been over the property line with Outlot A and Block 1, both of which he owns. And in order to construct the shed in a more usable location and to save potential tree loss, they're going to combine the lots to file for the building permit. As required with this subdivision, or I should say the lot combination, a drainage and utility easement would need to be vacated as well. As required by state statute, we're having a public hearing for the vacation of the drainage and utility easement. Again, here's kind of a vicinity map of the subject property. The vacation is the six-foot drainage and utility easement located on the eastern property line. This will be re-recorded when the lots are combined to the newly created eastern property line and would maintain the same drainage and utility easement width, so it would be in conformance with the typical drainage and utility easements encumbered by the property. We did not receive any comments from the public of objection to this vacation, nor are there any utilities within the easement, so it is clear to be vacated, and staff does support the vacation. The Planning Commission did review this case on June 21st and voted 7-0 in favor of approval of the replat, as well as the vacation. And with that, I would open it up for questions for staff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Before I open the public hearing, council, are there any questions before I do that? All right. I hereby open the public hearing. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is John Goodman, and my wife and I own the property at 15 Pleasant View. I wanted to thank both Eric and Bob Generous for helping us with this process. Everything we're doing is within our existing fence, and it will allow us to build our shed closer to the property line than the middle of the lot and will allow us to keep a mature maple tree and a mature oak tree. So we really appreciate your considering our request.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other folks that would like to come forward to this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for any further questions, comments, or motion from council. If not, entertain a motion, please.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Councilman Campion.
I move that the Chan-Hassan City Council approves the resolution approving the Goodman Homestead plat, subject to the conditions of approval of the resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the public drainage and utility easements within the Edwards Vogel Edition, as shown on the attached Exhibit A, and adopts the findings of fact.
Thank you, Councilman Campion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Goodman. All right, the next public hearing that we have this evening is to the approval of on-sale beer, wine, and liquor license to Tono Pizzeria and Cheese Steaks. Mr. Unmok, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Tonight, as the mayor said, I will be discussing the requests from Tono Pizzeria and Cheese Steaks for on-sale beer and wine liquor license. So the city received a request for an on-sale beer and wine liquor license from Tono Dakota LLC, doing business as Tono Pizzeria and Cheese Steaks. This will be a new restaurant that will occupy approximately 2,700 square feet, located at 190 Lake Drive East. Some background, the restaurant will be located within the multi-tenant building situated on the northwest corner of Lake Drive East and Dakota Avenue, known as the Dakota Retail Site. The developers working with Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District to secure a permit and the city's water resources engineer to secure an operations and maintenance agreement for stormwater treatment. Dakota Retail is also reconfiguring the layout of the parking lot, as well as constructing additional parking spaces. These items must be completed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. This may ultimately delay the anticipated restaurant opening of August 1st, 2022. Tono Dakota LLC consists of five partners, whose biographies can be found in your staff report. The group has submitted a certificate of insurance showing liquor liability and workers' compensation, which is required prior to issuance of the liquor license. A public hearing notice was published in the Chan-Hassan Villager on June 30th and mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the site. As of the date of this writing, staff has not received any comments from the public. The required annual fee for an on-sale beer and wine liquor license is $410, and that was included with the application, as well as the background investigation fee of $250. That's pretty much it. From there, I'll open it up for any questions from council. Also, we have a motion that I can pull up on your screen as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Unmok. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I believe you mentioned it, but I'd like for you to go in a little bit more detail. This is the one where the owner of the property came to us, and we asked for those extra parking spaces. But I haven't seen a plan for any of that. I know you said in your statement there that we would not allow occupancy of this restaurant until those parking spaces had been completed. Have you seen a plan, and you know what the timeline is to complete that project?
They have an approved plan through the city. They're waiting for the watershed district to give their approval for the stormwater part of it. And so the plan for the additional parking spaces were originally approved. What we, originally, our perspective was to see if it functioned without those, and the council said they wanted to see those put in before. So those were already in process. So what we're waiting for is the watershed to approve the stormwater management plan and then to provide a certificate of maintenance for that stormwater, and then also the construction of the parking stalls. Because that's what we understood was your intent, that those had to be done before they occupied.
Right, and do you anticipate any problems with the watershed district?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to verify all of that.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions, council, before I open the public hearing? All right, I hereby open the public hearing. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Antonio Gambino. It's 190 East Lake Street. So we're pretty basic. We sell pizza, cheese steaks. It's all their salads. Beer and wine's a pretty small portion of our sales. We just have it to complement the food for the few guests that are like, I need a beer. All right, we got you. So I think we'll have two to four options on tap, and two to four options with beer and, well, with cans and bottles, so. Not much, yeah.
Wonderful. Well, thanks for coming forward. We're excited. I know people are excited once the signage went up on the building, so once the parking lot gets finalized. Yeah, we're excited to have you, so welcome to the community.
Definitely.
Appreciate it. Thanks for being here tonight. Anyone else that would like to come forward? Now I will close the public hearing and return it to council for any further questions, comments, or a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I'll do a motion. I would propose that the Chan-Hassan City Council approves an on-sale beer and wine liquor license for Tono Dakota LLC, doing business as Tono Pizzeria and Cheese Steaks, located at 190 Lake Drive East, Suite 100.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilman McDonald. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Campion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Unmok. All right, next, we have three items under general business. The first item is the approval of the Hackamore Brewing Code Amendment request. Ms. Anderson, I think.
Yes, that's me. Thank you. So this item did appear before the Planning Commission on June 21st, and this, the request is for a brewery taproom with a limited menu. Right now, taprooms, brewery and taprooms are permitted, but the restaurant portion is not. So really, this request, it would be permitted, but the request is before you because they're asking for the restaurant. And as we've talked about this IOP district, we didn't really want restaurants located in those, but because of the uniqueness of the taproom with the brewery and the restaurant, the small portion of it, we felt that this was unacceptable. As you know, that area in the city, the Lake Drive-Dell Road, has got a combination of a lot of different uses in there because the clearance for the ceiling for stack storage is kind of not in the desires of users that want more of a 30-foot higher clearance. So we've had quite a few different uses go in there. So this change would allow the commercial kitchen to be an accessory to. So the Planning Commission did spend some time on how would we manage that. So the staff's assessment was the concerns over the conversion of industrial commercial, which we had decided with the IOP, putting that in there, because we did put, restaurants could go into if they're in a commercial district. So this would be different for the IOP. So again, as I talked about, the older industrial buildings are not as desirable, and the accessory commercial taproom cocktail would be permitted in the commercial. So really, the minimal difference here is just to go with the commercial kitchen in this type of use. So we do not believe it would be negatively impacted, the conditions. So one of the things that we talked about too at the Planning Commission is that in those areas where we have a lot of changing uses, because they were set up for warehouse districts, so we actually went out on site and a couple of different times just anecdotally looked at what the traffic management is, because we have to keep track of that, because there are different times of peak hours, like Feed My Starving Children, have different peak hours and some of the other uses out there. So we do not feel that this would be negatively impacting the area, this specific area. So it's not eligible. So allowing a commercial kitchen in conjunction with the taproom as an accessory use would have the following standards: It's not eligible for on-sale intoxicating liquors. Must be an accessory to a taproom, so you can't just have the commercial kitchen itself. And if the brewery may not be licensed as a brew, if a brewery is not licensed as a brew pub. And I want to be clear about a brew pub, because that would be somewhere used to being other liquors or cocktail lounges to. So this is someone that's brewing their own beer, and they've got some other activities that they're kind of planning with this, and I'll let the owner speak to that a little bit more.
Ms. Anderson, could you just clarify that a little bit more, that last bullet?
Yep, so a brew pub is where you would have a kitchen. It's more like a standard restaurant, where you're not only selling the beer that you brew, but you will also be selling other beer, and you could also be a cocktail lounge. So this has kind of gone beyond what the original, what we saw as a brewery. So you know, now it's really becoming a full-fledged restaurant or, you know, that kind of thing with all different types of beer.
Okay.
Or cocktails. So we were trying to just manage this on a smaller scale and see how it works, and it meets the intent of what the owner has. So we are recommending approval of the change, and we feel like based on the scale and the plans that they have shown, again, they'll have outdoor seating too, that we feel it fits in the scale of the building where it's located. So we are recommending, as of the Planning Commission, that you adopt the motion approving the change to allow for the commercial kitchen in there.
Okay.
So with that, I take any questions?
Sure, Councilman Campion.
Ms. Anderson, I do have one question. So, you know, looking at, I know we have one other brewery in town. Their district, is it?
It's a commercial district. It's a PUD. Commercial, underlying, it's underlying business, general business.
So does approving this make it then an option for them, or it would just be a separate?
They're permitted in that district. I think right now, they're kind of using the food truck alternative. That's kind of what a lot of them do too, is to kind of mix up their food choices. So they've kind of chosen that route, and we're happy to work with them on that.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand, if being in the commercial district, if they're somehow precluded from, you know, adding something like this if they wanted to, so they could?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Campion. Any other questions, council, before you said the applicant is here and would like to come forward?
Sure.
Okay, please. Hey, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Zach. I'm the founder of Hackamore Brewing. I just picked up the keys at the location last Friday. It is going to be located at 18651 Lake Drive East, on the corner of Dell and Lake Drive. Hackamore Brewing is a dream of mine that I'm making come to life, and it's upscale and elevated brewery. Within the brewery, we're planning on having some amenities that should be fun for adding some fun things to do for everybody that comes in. We're going to have a full-sized golf simulator. We're going to have a large stage to have music and some nightlife. And we're also going to do a full merchandise shop, like you would see at a golf course, with co-branded apparel and things like that. I'm partnering with a friend of mine that owns a housebuilding company called John Kramer &amp; Sons. They're an award-winning builder, and we're really pairing this brewery with the upscale vibe of their custom homes that they build. So this is really going to be kind of a unique product that you don't see every brewery present, and I think that's really what's going to make us different. With that being said, the food is a very large piece to the business plan, and we're going to be doing a smaller menu. We really want to be a brewery first and foremost and have a smaller menu of food with elevated pub fare, is like what I would like to call it, with burgers, chicken sandwiches, chicken wings, things like that. And that's, the reason that is important to me is I don't want people to leave when they're hungry. I would like to keep them there. So that is an important part of that, and that is the main reason why I'm here, and that's pretty much everything I have to say about that.
Great, well, thank you for your presentation. Before I make a couple of comments, is there, are there any questions or comments that anyone from council would like to?
Can I just add one other comment too? So they had a very, very, very nice business plan, and they had looked for quite a while. So we were pretty excited that they end up choosing this location, because, and you've looked for it a number of cities kind of in this.
I started looking in November, and I finally landed on this in April. And yeah, I was originally looking in Edina. I live in Eden Prairie, not far from here. So we're kind of right on the border of Eden Prairie. So I live five minutes from the location and was originally looking all over the place, and to find it five minutes from home was kind of amazing. And it was worth the other things falling through, because the facility is beautiful, and the area is going to be fantastic.
Well, we, you know, are very excited to have you part of the community, and Ms. Anderson can jump on what I was going to say. I know in the staff report I read that you had looked at other communities, Edina being one. jump on what I was gonna say. I know in the staff report I read that you had looked at other communities, Edina being one, and I know you're probably in a very biased room, but we think we're the best, so. So we're very confident that you made the right choice, and, and our residents continue to talk about restaurants and places to go, and have been thrilled with, with Chan Hassen Brewing here, right in, in Chan- right in downtown Chan Hassen, but to add another brewery is just very exciting for our community, and we appreciate your interest in that you landed here. So we're excited to have you part of Chan Hassen.
Thank you very much.
So thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions for, for city staff, I would entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion that the Chan Hassen City Council adopts the attached ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the City Code concerning permitted accessory uses in the industrial office park district.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. Welcome to Chan Hassen. See, I told you you chose the right community.
Yeah, yeah, when can we show up?
I would love to try to get it over by the end of this calendar year. That's kind of the goal.
Perfect.
With delays, we'll make that happen.
Wonderful, alright. Thank you.
That's great.
Alright, next we have the Santa Vera Residential Development Concept PUD Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item appeared at the planning commission on June 21st. Again, it's, the applicant is Doug Hanson, and the request is to amend a concept PUD for a mixed-use residential development. So the subject site is 1615 Santa Vera Drive, which currently has an apartment building on site. And they are looking at expanding that. It is guided for a PUD, and I'm gonna go through the history of that a little bit. So it does allow up to sixteen units an acre, but it has a PUD that restricts that. So, the currently, there's the eighteen-unit apartment on the site already. I have my laser pointer here. So this is the existing building with the detached garage, two-story building. It does, is served by City Services Sewer and Water. This is how the existing building looks. Again, dated for the time it was built, but it serves very well. It's actually a very nice, well-kept building, and it does provide reasonable rents, considered kind of naturally occurring affordable housing, as we like to say. So, I'll give you the history of the PUD. So in 1999, they subdivided the parcel to provide additional park space to the city, so that there's actually a ball field up there. So that was rezoned at the time when that was done, from R12 to PUDR. And that, with the existing eighteen-unit apartment, in that PUD, it said you can have another thirty-unit apartment building. So that was a total of forty-eight. When in 2012, the city staff went through all of downtown's PUDs, and they had, all had different standards. So we went through and tried to codify them. Someone, someone called in and said, "Can I add on the porch?" We didn't have to go research all these, so we codified everything. So in this instance, because it had a PUD, we went through and codified it too. So it had the existing eighteen-unit apartment with the additional three-story unit, and then the PUD prohibited any single-family homes, detached townhouses, and the like. I don't know why, but it did, and that's, that's how it was put in place. So, the Hanson's came forward with a schematic that's shown here, and this is what was presented to the planning commission, and I'll go through a little bit more of their, their con- the concept. So they were looking at thirty, the thirty-five apartment units in the three-story building, five single-family homes, six townhomes, and they were at that time, at the planning commission, considering eight units added on to the existing eighteen units on the site. It went over the, the density maximum, and there was a lot of concerns from the neighbors regarding the height of the buildings, the mix of the different types of product, and what the visual impacts would be. So I'll go through those a little bit in more detail when we look at the changes between the two. I'll turn it over to Eric to kind of go through some of the other issues.
Right. So, again, this was a conceptual PUD that we received to review, so there weren't any completed or finished engineering plans, things of that nature. Again, it's the, the whole concept, behind a concept review. Looking at the concept, however, it's, it's pretty clear that this site or the development would enact a lot of the watershed rules and the city rules when it comes to their stormwater management practices. They are located in the Riley-Purgatory Watershed District, so their, their rules when it comes to water quality abstraction and rate control would be required. Something that we have communicated the applicant, and they know they would have to address if this does move forward. The site is located in an older part of town, which does have minimal stormwater treatment. PUDs, you know, they do allow for an enhanced flexibility to the development, and in turn, the city can recommend or require, you know, additional benefits. And looking at how we have some minimal stormwater treatment in this area, or I would say deficient stormwater treatment, staff feels that in order to offset the intensification of the site use, it would be a reasonable request to have more than what is standard for stormwater treatment required of the development. And this has been relayed to the applicant as well, so what that could mean is a potential fifty percent increase over what they may have to do by the letter of the rules from the Riley-Purgatory and the city, city ordinances and stuff like that. Also to note, and this again, has been communicated to the applicant, there are city records that show there are two small wetlands on the south side of the site. They were delineated, however, that delineation is going to expire here soon, so they will have to require, they'll have to update that delineation, but also go through the WACA process as well as the wetland permit application, or wetland alteration permit process as well. Kind of looking at the site access for this development, what was shown or what was proposed in the concept. Originally, the, the concept does show some street connectivity coming from the intersection of Laredo Drive and Del Rio. Staff does agree that is the most adequate place for, you know, the extension of street connectivity. Staff would support the use of a private street here, not a public street. It does meet the requirements of Section 18-57 of our ordinance. There would still be a couple exhibits that we would require just to make sure every box is checked in regards to that, but it does look like that would be the most viable option for a street connection. Some of the residents who attended the planning commission addressed their concerns with traffic safety and traffic in general in the area. When staff was reviewing the concept plan, we came to the same conclusion when we looked at the intensification of the, the site, that it would hit trip ends that would justify a traffic study. So that would be required if this proposal, excuse me, did move forward. Traffic studies look at a gamut of different issues. Some of the key things are the volumes during the peak hour, potential safety conflicts. They can even look at the livability of an area when you're looking at intensification, or an increase in volumes in a local or a residential neighborhood. They also go as far as looking at intersection analysis and performance. Here, the, the biggest, or the key intersections would be Santa Vera and Kerber, as well as Laredo Drive and 78th Street, but we would require that immediate intersections or local intersections be evaluated as well when it comes to potential conflicts, volumes, that kind of thing. Lastly, a study would need to incorporate the on-site circulation. So we're not recommending a through-street with this development, so there would have to be adequate turnaround for fire and emergency services and meet all, again, the ordinance, all the requirements of the ordinance. The concept plan also did show an improvement to pedestrian connectivity, which staff was in agreement with. From the exhibit in front of you, it's this orange dashed line. There's a lack of a par pedestrian access route between two pedestrian ways. Essentially, the trail, the public trail here just kind of ends at Santa Vera, and residents would have to go through the street. So this addition, again, would be something the city would, you know, be in favor of.
So, again, I want to remind the, the city council the goal of the concept. So the current owner of the property says, you know, I'm not sure that the thirty units is a viable option for us to go. They've worked on, brought in a number of projects forward to the city that were not sustainable. So, in order for them to get some feedbacks, we go through the concept process. So there's not final engineered, these are all schematic. So the ask is to say if I could do a mix of different uses in here, and, and then, as we stated with the PUD, you can ask for some feedback, you know, some, whether it's architecture, some improvements, sidewalks, all the other. So, the goal of this is to give direction. It's not binding, but it also allows the developer, the applicant, not to have spend traffic study money if, if this isn't gonna go anywhere. So we're just trying to get a read of their ask and what your reception is to that. So the planning commission did have some concerns, and they voted four to three for the, in favor, but four to three. There was a lot of questions. So, I just want to review with them. So they do have a revised plan since the planning commission. So they reduced the number of units from fifty, between fifty-six and sixty. So it's a thirty to thirty-four apartment, three-story. They, in order to accommodate some of the concerns regarding fire access and turnaround, and I'll go through these a little bit more in an illustrative picture, but they would be four single-family homes, four townhomes. And the other thing is that they would keep the existing building without adding additional units to it, and reface that and bring that up. Again, that's a naturally occurring affordable housing, so we would like to keep that there. It's, it's a little home for, for quite a few people there. Again, you know, just saying what is the, you know, what is the, the balance here? So this was the initial concept over here. So this had the, the, the third story on the existing three-story over here, the single-family, or the townhouses, not the single-family. So the revised concept then has the turnaround, so they've lost some of the units here, and again, not having the additional story on the existing apartment building. So again, what we don't know is if they come back with a wetland, if they have to accommodate the stormwater. There may not be that many units in there. We don't know what the final product is gonna be. So that's part of, as they drill down and get additional information, the project could always change. So. So again, the applicant, so your level discretion here is the applicant exploring and amending the PUD to increase the total number of units consistent with the comprehensive plan. So this would meet the plan. The plan entered the PUD, you can do different types of products. The amendment will allow the, permit the apartments to townhouses, detached townhouses, or single-family homes. I think there were some concerns regarding the single-family home. They're trying to introduce some different products in smaller lot homes. So the city council can direct the applicant to proceed with the mixed housing types. You know, issues and concerns from, and address those. As you can see, there was a number of concerns that were addressed that they would have to do when they submitted, again, a lot more detailed. Not only on just the stormwater, but there are a lot of just straight engineering stuff, fire department, parking wrecks, things. So the applicant would then proceed with that amendment, or the city council determined that the mixed housing type is not appropriate, and the applicant could proceed with, just going back to what was originally approved on the plan, or something in between. So, I have to summarize what the ask is. They're asking for additional of twelve units, and allow, something besides apartments, to allow some single-family homes and townhomes, which we think makes a nice transition to, into the neighborhood. So with that, just looking for some feedback from the council, and then we've got a couple of different motions, whichever way you would like to go, but.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. And I know that, alright, I'm thinking the applicant is here.
Yes.
Tonight, so if he wants to, they want to come forward at some point to, to discuss, I know for both the applicant as well as the residents that were at the planning commission, we get the minutes from the, from the commission, so we have read through both the presentation from the Hanson's, but also, you know, from all the residents and the comments and the feedback. So, we have heard that if there's new information, while this isn't a public hearing, I, you know, I, I welcome people to come forward, but before we get to that piece of it, council thoughts or questions for Ms. Anderson before we move into that stage of the conversation? Go ahead.
One question. So the current apartments that would just be refaced, all of their parking looks to be where the new apartments would be. Would they get garage stalls rebuilt for them, or would they just go to?
The garage stall, the garage is. Gonna stay. That would also be refaced too. It's kind of funny, because this orientation is slightly tipped.
Oh, okay.
I had the same.
Okay. Now I'm tracking. Never mind. I have to keep reminding myself that.
Okay. Councilwoman McDonald?
Yeah, I've got a question about, I've never seen a mix quite like this in, in this area, you know, in this size of an area. What, what kind of price points are, are we looking at? The current apartments would be affordable. How about the new apartments? Are, are they also looking to be affordable? And then how about the houses? What kind of price range? What are we creating here as far as, as a neighborhood?
I'll let the applicant speak to that, but we didn't, didn't ask them to make anything affordable or subsidized, so I would, I would ask them if they know the price point, the applicant.
Okay. I'll save it for them.
Any other questions, council? I have a couple for Mr. Hendrickson. I know traffic is a, is a significant concern, and I know you said that it might trip the, a traffic study because of the, you know, the number of units. When you look at Del Rio and Laredo and try to determine between versus a public and a private street, how do you arrive at that determination?
So, when you're looking at, we would support if they proposed a private street. If they propose a public street, it doesn't necessarily meet some of the requirements that we typically would want to see in a public street. You're usually supplying street connectivity, requiring secondary access if necessary for emergency service vehicles. One of the benefits, which is one of the, kind of the bullet points here about the use of a private street, is that it should also enhance or protect some of the natural resources. And where we understand, the concept plan does look fairly built out. The applicant has expressed a, a desire to save some of the trees in the area, to have a more built-in feel and a kind of a more, an established feel. So that is something we'd like to see in the assessment of that recommendation for the private street as well. That's essentially kind of how staff determined we would accept or, or recommend approval of a private street if proposed.
Okay, thank you. And I know with the PUD, I mean, obviously it gives staff, you know, and council more discretion on some, some of the items that are recommended, and and, you know, there's that, kind of the dichotomy that residents are facing with, you know, the safety component, the loss of trees, the park and trails. And so when we look to, when we look at this overall concept, is that gonna be something that, you know, the city staff is gonna make that recommendation to have those trails throughout and save as many trees, and I know the landscaping piece come, would come next in the, in the process, but you know, for the residents around that area, obviously it's a big, well, it's an improvement of the overall site. I know that there is just those elements of, of the, kind of keeping that park feel to the, to the site as well. So what, what is staff looking for there?
So, in the PUD, then we'd put those standards in, and we'd expect that, you know, I think the, the form is first gonna come out, where the wetlands are, that's gonna shape some things and preservation of trees around those, where the stormwater needs to go. So those are gonna, gonna drive some of the design things, but after that, as we would look at the type of product and how the, the roof lines and the sightlines and the location of buildings, with how they would be viewed from the exterior of the site. So, some of this is public, abutting public, which is the park area, the ball field sites, and then the school parking lot itself. So that they're different, obviously the impact on those, on those facing on Laredo and Santa Vera are a little bit different, but yes, we would look at the heights of those and the architectural design of all those buildings and to, and we'd put those into the PUD.
Okay. And then we also look at different driveway access, because obviously if you have Del Rio, and then, you know, just to the south, you have that in and out for Chan Hassen Elementary, and I know everybody that has kids knows the challenges with pickup and drop-off and the backups, and, and it's, it's challenging when you live in those neighborhoods to, you know, to see that, that kind of traffic. And so when you look at the entrance and exits of the overall site plan, that's something that will be taken into consideration as well.
Yeah, in conjunction as well with the, the traffic study. There are certain guidelines when it comes to access management, when it's either a driveway or a street. Those are the things that would kind of get fleshed out within that study. So that, that, those, most of the recommendations, when we see them in traffic impact studies, we do require those when we have approvals for any other type of development. It would be no different for this one. Also, we always require that the, the traffic engineering or the traffic engineering- Also, we always require that the, the traffic engineering or the traffic engineering firm is more or less a third party. So, that way it's kind of an independent view so we can get a, a true read of kind of what their assessment would be and then we also do our own review as well.
Okay. Yeah, and part of the concern is the stacking and I know that would be part of the traffic study. And if this moved forward, you know, not only the existing residents, but then the future residents, you know, there are concerns up by MMW with people parking in and around those neighborhoods to wait for their kids to come out. So, I just hope that that's a component of the overall, not only for the existing residents, but the added residents, but then the, the future residents of that neighborhood as well to have that under consideration.
We would be able to provide staff historical and that type of knowledge to the, the traffic engineering firm that's selected to have them incorporate those types of points within their review as well. Some of the, the items that are on record from the planning commission that the public did bring up were noted and those are things that we would direct to that firm to assess.
Perfect. And then, just my last question, this would be for Ms. Anderson. I know, you know, there's obviously a lot of history with the site and when you looked at codifying the, all the PUDs around the area, and I think you said that was 2012. And there, do we not really know why it wasn't allowed to have single-family homes and townhouses or can you?
You know, we just codified it. We didn't go back and reexamine that paradigm, why that, why it was given the twelve. I mean, that one was made, that was redone in ninety-seven, was it? Yeah. So, no. Yeah, it was, yeah, Mancino signed that one. So, it was quite a while ago. And I don't know what deal was made, if that's what, you know, the Hanson family thought was going to be there. You know, they wanted to stick to apartments and why they didn't want any single-family there, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. All right, I mean, it's just interesting that they're, you know, to exclude those other components. And so, I just was, especially when you're in a, in an area where it is single-family homes, to not, you know, to exclude those or say that those are not allowed.
The Hanson's may be able to answer that, yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect. Any other questions, council? If not, would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Thank you so much for having us here today.
Charlie Hanson, Perry Hanson, Doug Hanson.
Yeah, so all three generations are here. And, yeah, so I'm Charlie Hanson and I'm kind of maybe self-employed concept designer slash project manager. Just kind of getting this off the ground. And my dad here is a general contractor at Hanson Home Tech, which is another business here in Chan Hassen. And then, my grandpa here, he's, he's too humbled to admit it, but in a lot of ways, he's like the grandfather of Chan Hassen. This area, you know, was, as you may know, historically was Farmer Kerber and he bought that back in the day and made two-hundred-plus houses back from the sixties all the way to there.
So, this particular plot that we're talking about had, had originally planned, coming about what your, your question was, eight or ten other of those apartments in nineteen seventy-eight we built. So, the ballfield, the Hanson Field and the two, that was all the land that they were going to do. So, that's why it was just, it was just scheduled to have like ten of those apartment buildings in there.
So, he ended up donating Hanson Field, that baseball field there as well as Kerber Pond and all these other things I'm just kind of discovering. So, he's a very generous guy. He won't be the first one to say it. But I say all that just to say that, you know, we're neighbors. I live in this community. I have a five-year, eight-year-old that play in these woods. We know about the traffic that's there with the ballfield already that's existing. So, we're not people from out of state. You know, this is our neighborhood. I love Chan Hassen. As of this year, I'm the president of the farmer's market here in Chan Hassen as well. So, to say that, you know, I love this city is, I really mean that. And I've got to know a lot of people. Lucy, I think you've bought coffee before back when I started handling coffee. So, you know, I say that just because, you know, we're neighbors and we're here to build something that we feel fits the community. And building those townhouses, especially on Laredo there, helps it kind of fit and kind of give a little bit of a buffer of that apartment building, even though it's not necessary. I think that'll help the community. So, that's our heart. And, yeah, we can answer any questions you might have. But we've kind of revised this plan, looking at what some of the neighbors talked about. I've even gone to some barbecue with some of those neighbors that came. So, we're in like direct contact with those people and working, trying to make sure this plan feels like it fits the community. That's really important to us, so.
Great, well, thank you. Councilman McDonald, did you want to re-ask your question?
Yeah, one I had asked, I'm sure you heard, but this is kind of an unusual, I guess, layout for a lot, lot like this. I mean, generally you see this over hundreds of acres where big developers come in, you've got all these buffers. And so, what I'm wondering is the current apartments, and just tell me, because I don't want to make an assumption that's wrong, but aren't those affordable? And then, would the new apartments also be affordable? Okay, so those would be like market rate?
Market rate, five or older. And we're looking at, I mean, a part of the revised plan, looking at traffic studies is possibly, and I've talked to some of the neighbors that kind of eased their tensions a little bit because this is, you know, it's right at the end of a commercial district where it gets to residential. So, we understand that. And looking at possibly doing maybe, you know, of the three floors, maybe two of them potentially fifty-five or older, which sometimes are a single car, maybe already retired or looking that way. And, I mean, you're a senior technically according to fifty-five plus. So, it's like we're not talking like assisted living. I know you resemble that, but anyway. I, I say that because it's, it's, we're trying to strategize to make sure that, you know, we're allowing just a little less density as far as traffic is concerned. And that's maybe a creative solution to keep the density, but maybe minimize that traffic, especially in the mornings. I live here, so I know what that craziness at the bus stop in that area can look like and maybe kind of moving that demographic a little bit maybe eases that kind of traffic.
What's the demographic that you're targeting then for the single-family and for the townhomes? What are you looking at for that?
Probably the single homes are going to be four hundred thousand.
What are you asking, demographic? Demograph, I mean, we're looking for families similar to the neighborhood. Townhouses could be, I mean, the possibility of adding elevators into that because I know it's, they would be three stories there. So, that, making sure that that would be able to be a home that someone could kind of grow in is still a possibility. We've seen those kind of styled houses come and pop up at Excelsior, kind of know where those are, so. Again, we can't tell you exactly who will live in there.
Right, because you haven't, I'm just trying to get an idea of, you know, what the concepts are and stuff. So, then it looks as though you're, you're basically upscaling the lot is what it sounds like. And then, when you redo the current apartments, that's going to be to fit with the decor for the new housing and stuff. Is that right? So, you'll kind of upscale.
It's all part of one.
It's part of one lot, yeah.
You want to just update it or show?
Yeah, we're looking at just like a timeless design that feels like it fits Chan Hassen. There's a lot of trendy architecture that goes up and I feel like within two years, it's like kind of an eyesore. So, making sure, we're working with possibly a local architect, maybe you know Tammy Magny. I know you worked with Bob as well, that's a possibility. So, working with a local architect is something we're looking at. Make sure this fits the community the best as possible and that puts up something really trendy.
So, all of this will be complementary to one another then? We're not going to have, you know, something that stands out. And I guess I would look at the current apartments and think that, well, what are you going to build complementary to that? Not a very pretty picture. Yeah.
No, 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 it'll be, I mean, that's a part of updating, using this opportunity to update that one. So, it does fit. But at the same time, avoiding the cookie cutter development. I mean, and we've all seen them pop up and they're just one of the same. So, trying to work again with a local architect to make this feel like it's organic and a part of that is keeping the tree cover on the far side. And again, I know some people hate cottonwoods because it, you know, piles up their AC units. But at the same time, a tree's a tree and that gives a buffer with the school and the park and we want to value that. And we've done tree studies, we know where they are. Part of the reasons for those detached garages is actually the ability to be able to move some of these buildings so that we can, you know, if there's a tree this big, if we can preserve it, we want to try.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? I, go ahead, Councilman Champion, do you have?
I just have one minor question. So, across from the, the single-family homes, are those, so those are like duplexes or?
Yeah, those are like, I don't.
They're townhomes, they're just built together with a dividing wall. So, there's only, there's two of those, but four units.
And there would be parking built into those?
Yeah, yeah, so it's like a garage, entryway, first level.
So, you go under a two-car garage and there'll be potential of elevator shaft from the garage to the.
Something you could build in if you wanted to add, just put something like that. So, that's, I don't know if you've seen those at Excelsior, though they're a little more Victorian kind of style. They pop up, similar type of design. It's, it's a little bit more efficient with the space and maybe someone who may not want to do light lawn care and things like that. It's just a different style. And again, we could build all the same things, but I think that a development with mixed is a better value and it fits the community. That's something important to me, you know, when I think about that, if this is where someone I would live, so.
All right, that was my minor question, thank you.
Yep.
And I, and mine is in that, those same units. So, I thought you, I heard you say three stories. Is that because you have the garage lower level?
Garage would be the first story.
Okay, so garage, garage is first and then. And so, in terms of height, how does that fit with the existing building? I know that's two-story and then you have the three-story. So, what are you looking at for height throughout that?
Well, the height of a three-story is about twenty-one feet or something.
Okay. And what, I mean, is the, is a pretty standard two-story. So, are the townhomes going to be the same height then as the new apartment building?
Yes, and I think the elevation increases.
The new apartment building is kind of up on a slope and it kind of overlooks the ballfields.
And the, and the current apartments.
It rises up probably, I don't know, eight or ten feet.
And the current apartment buildings, they also step up. You can see there's two boxes there. The current ones, one steps up about four or five feet. So, it's a very, I mean, it's, it's got some dynamic. It's not, as you can see here, it's a little more flat, but it's got some elevation integrated in there. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, yes.
Yeah, you can't see there's another section there.
Oh, another section there.
Yeah, that, that one's up about five feet higher.
Okay, that's all I have for questions, thank you. Unless there's anybody else? I don't think so, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So, Mayor, I was just going to add too. So, that's one of the things that we put in the PUD is, if they, if it's supposed to go forward, is put all those height conditions and kind of those sort of, not just the architecture, but that would be some of it too.
Okay.
In the height and.
All right, and I, and I'm going to ask if there's anyone that wants to make a comment to come forward. But then afterwards, I'd just like to circle back and, and have a better understanding of what we should anticipate next and the discretion that's allowed for council as this, in, in the planning commission for that matter, but, you know, for the council as this, as this project potentially could move forward. So, like I said to anyone that is here tonight, we did read your comments as part of the planning commission, but if you made the effort to come tonight, I, you know, I welcome the opportunity to come forward. Just ask that you state your name and address for the record and, and know that we have read your previous comments. But please, if you want to make a, if you have any more comments, please feel free.
David Miller, I live at four-twenty Saddle Bay Circle and I think this is one of the greatest Con Johns I've ever seen. Now, we lived through one of these where the city council got their act together. That was a street project that they wanted to put in our circles, flower beds. And finally, the city council got rid of the idiot that was trying to do that. The fire chief said, "How can you do it?" Now, I think this is the same thing going on here. This is absolutely unbelievable. My children walk to school from there back. You can't tell me with all those people, that all in there, there is not going to be traffic problems constantly. No matter what this, these people say, this is unbelievable. Why did they build a stadium there? I'm serious. That is overdoing a lot that size, period. There's no other thing to this. This is unbelie, I'm shocked that you're going to consider this. This is unbelievable. Maybe four or five or maybe six family homes in there, but a three-story building? Like I said, build a stadium. That'd even be nicer, we could make more money. But this is, I'm sorry, folks, but this is not right. And it's, it's time for people to say, "Wait, enough is enough." How much do you need? How much do we need? How many people do we have to satisfy? There's kids still going to that school. That traffic, they can't tell me, anything they do with the traffic thing is not going to alleviate it. I don't care what they say. I don't care what the planning commission said, what anybody said. I'm upset about this. This is crazy. I mean, really, folks, this is a city of children and people walking. Also, by the one devoted sidewalk down our streets, and that didn't go over. But the city council got their act together back then and said, "Enough is enough." And I think the city council here should say, "Let's revise this thing to get common sense and do the right thing for Chan Hassen." I mean, is there another two, three-story building in this area? No. So, we're going to get a new one? Thank you very much. No. All I say to you people is look into your minds, your hearts, and your ability to be council members and say, "Enough is enough." Change it, then I don't, I won't, I'll agree with it if they put single-family homes or something in there, but not this. This is, I, I, whatever you want to do fine, but this is incredible.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward tonight? All right. Council, any further questions? And then I want to get a little more clarification from Ms. Anderson on the level of discretion we have. If this was to move forward, what can be changed, what can't be changed? If you could let us know, that'd be great, please.
So, as we stated in the beginning, the Hanson family owned the property over here. So, they had entitlement to do three-hundred apartment units. So, they still have approval to do a thirty-unit apartment building. Whether, that's what the PUD currently states. So, they have that entitlement to move forward. So, what they're asking for is to put the additional smaller, the townhomes or the, and the, kind of the single-family homes. That's what they're asking for.
So, just to clarify that, Ms. Anderson, just so, so without any changes to the PUD as it exists today, the Hanson's could move forward with an additional apartment building?
Correct.
Thirty-unit apartment building on that site as long as they operated within the confines of the existing PUDs?
Correct, they would just have to come through site plan approval. Yes, correct.
Okay, bless you.
So, so, the intent here, I'm going to make sure I got the exact number. So, the intent, let's see if I can go back to, I've got the comparisons, what they had in here. So, what they're asking for is additional twelve units. And, because the current ordinance doesn't allow single-family homes. They have a right to build an apartment building because that's what they asked for, because that's what they had on the original with the other acreage before they sold it to the city, the school district. So, that's what they envisioned up there was three apartment buildings. So, now they're down to the two apartment buildings. That's what they have entitlement for. So, we're saying, what they're requesting and what we're telling you is that they, we would have them do a PUD and then modify it when we have controls over the traffic, the architecture. If they want to have senior housing and you want to put a control on there that so many of the units should be fifty-five plus, those are the things you could incorporate. So, that's really the ask is for the additional twelve units.
Okay. And the twelve dwelling units are the single-family homes and the townhomes?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor and council, Kate, could you just back up one slide?
Yep.
Go back one more. Sorry, one more. Here. So, what they're asking for is up to four additional apartment units. So, they're considering between thirty and thirty-four. They have approval for the thirty or they have the entitlement for the four single-family homes and four townhomes. So, the twelve units are made up of all three product types. And just for clarification, for everybody's understanding, entitlement is a legal definition.
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to be very clear.
We can verify that with the city attorney.
Okay, all right. So, so, back to the conversation then or the question about what's next in the process?
what's next in the process, um, for council, planning commission, I, I understand from the applicant's perspective, then they, you know, dive deeper into the design and work with city staff and, but at what point or what stage does it come back for further comment and question and clarification from either planning, commission, or council?
Sure, great question. So again, the concept PUD is not legally binding to any party, but in good faith, we're trying to give them direction. Not only staff, we put a laundry list of things that they would need to do to move forward. They've heard from the planning commission, they've already modified their plans, and now they're waiting to hear from the city council. Then they'll determine how they want to proceed forward based on those comments that you give them. Because now they're going to have to do some engineering, um, hire the traffic consultant, beat with the water sheet districts, and now it's, you know, um, again, they're doing that on, if, if they can meet some of the, um, or most of the conditions that were out there, that they could proceed. But you could also say that, you know, we don't want to do mixed housing, um, we don't, we'll, we just assume you proceed with what you've got. Or some are in between, if you can make it work, or there's certain things that you want to see out there, whether it's the architecture or you want to make sure that the traffic, make sure they're preserving trees, all of the above, um, those would be the expectations that we would include into the PUD. Excuse me, I didn't finish that, so we'll go back to the planning commission for another public hearing.
Okay.
And they would weigh in, is it meeting the intent, we, we would draft the, you know, the constructs of the PUD. And then they would have to show how they met all the traffic and the stormwater and the like. Um, and then, um, they would weigh in on it, and whether, however the planning commission makes their recommendation, you would have the final say for the next, um, approval process. So that would be preliminary, you know, the concept, um, for the PUD itself.
Okay, so tonight you're looking for feedback from council in terms of the existing plans, any things that we would like to see as a component of the PUD? So when, if, if the motion was to move forward to see kind of the next stage of this, you would have council's thoughts on the next iteration of plans?
Correct, and that's really for the developer to decide, you know, if, if, if it's, um, if it makes sense for them to go forward or not, you know, so they're looking for direction.
Perfect, okay, so then council, in terms of, um, um, kind of the site plan, the recommendation or the ask, um, from the developer in terms of the added, the twelve added dwellings? Uh, any components of the PUD that you would like to have part of the consideration for next time? Um, I welcome your feedback. If anybody would like to begin? Um, sure, uh, would you mind coming forward, please?
I'm Doug Hanson. One of the originals, old, old timers. The first, uh, planning commission and the council Tom and I were at was at the old city hall. And there was no air conditioning. It was hot. The first house that we built was, uh, I think it was seventy-six oh one here, I have no, and we sold it for just under twenty thousand, with a three-bedroom Rambler with double garage and brick right here in the front. So times have changed. We're trying to do something here just to finish that land that we, that I have, that's the last of the land that I own. And I'm just trying to, uh, make it look good and, and fit with the neighborhood. That's why we had a few single-family in there. And, uh, we're just open to getting something done and finishing what we can do with the land the best we can. It originally had, uh, set for ten eight-unit buildings, like the two units that we started out with, that was two of the ten. And we put sewer and water in for the next three. So this was set for eighty units before we sold that, uh, donated or sold it to the, the park for the, for the ballpark. So it was all cut and dried, but, um, Tom and I split up about that time and it wasn't the time to go ahead with that. And I, I tried to get the apartment building done. This is the third time now, so. We want to do something that's good for the city, and we wouldn't do anything that's bad for the city. And so if it can work, uh, that's what we like to, like to do, whatever, whatever works for the city and for us. So, thank you for serving as a council. I know how important it is. Planning commission too, so. Been a long time, thanks for, thanks for doing what you're doing. Kate, I've known for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mayor, I want to correct myself on the total number of units, so I'm reading from the PUD that we recodified in twenty-twelve. And that ordinance says they have forty, the right to forty-six units, but they're prohibited from doing any townhouses, detached houses, or detached single-family, so the only thing you could do is a forty-six unit apartment building. As Mr. Hanson said, since I've been here thirty years, he's proposed, um, a couple of times to go forward with the project and it never came to fruition.
Okay.
So that was the codified one, so it's not thirty, I just want to correct that.
It's forty-six, okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, i- if you're looking for comment, I'll, uh, I, I can start it off.
Please.
You know, I, I asked a question about what it is you're doing, because I've never seen anything quite like this, uh, that you could be on to something new, or I don't know, it may not work, but, uh, I, I would be interested in seeing more detail and, and I would like to see how you address some of these issues that, that a PUD will bring up. And then maybe with more detail, you know, I, I could render a better judgment a, as, as to whether you proceed or whether we're going to say, no, you got to go back to something else. I, I don't think you building an apartment building i- is good. I, I just think it would be better, and, and again, this goes against the gentleman's, uh, comments, but I, I think it would be better to have something where people have a, uh, more of a home structure, I mean, the trees, I appreciate, you know, you're trying to keep all of that and, and make it more of a livable lot with a home that people can be proud of and, and be able to, uh, upkeep. I, I think that it would improve the value of the neighborhood of, you know, what you're looking at building. So I, I don't think we hurt home values. I am concerned about the, uh, the traffic, um, me with the school there, and I, I've seen it whenever, uh, the school's out and, you know, the way everybody lines up, but that's no different than, uh, o- over here on the corner with, uh, uh, the private school, but it comes and goes. So I, I would like to see more detail a, as to what you're wanting to do, how does all this fit in, how do you make it a community, is what I'm looking for? Uh, how is all of this going to play together and is it going to be, uh, harmonious with what you have? And how's it going to affect the neighborhoods around you? And I think, right now, I, I can't really answer that question, uh, because I really need, need to see a little bit more, but you could be on to something, uh, then again, maybe you're not, and until we get down to some more detail, I can't answer that question, so I would like to, uh, see you move forward, uh, you know, with this and, and give us something to, um, to get a better feel for what's going on there, so I, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. Councilwoman Ream?
Yeah, I would, um, agree with what Councilwoman McDonald has said, I think, certainly it needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, but I'm in favor of adding housing, I think, you know, right now we're in the middle of a housing crisis, so the idea of, um, building something that more people could enjoy, I think makes sense, um, I'm interested in hearing about the neighborhood park. Um, I am concerned about traffic, but that's a concern throughout the city, um, and hopefully we could address that in the next iteration of this, um, but yes, I would be in favor of moving forward on, uh, looking at the next step.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ream. Any other thoughts? Councilwoman Campion?
Uh, my lights on. Yeah, I, I, I agree with, with, uh, with council members that spoke, I'd, I'd like to see some more detail here, you know, before we approve anything concrete. You know, the concept is interesting, but to see a bit more detail on those houses, um, I mean, I, I think as you're describing potentially four hundred thousand dollar house with a detached garage, you know, from that level, it's hard to see, you know, what, what that would really look and feel like and how, you know, that would look in, you know, with a townhouse across the, the road from it and then the apartments, and just to get a better sense of really how they fit together. So interested to see more detail and not, not ruling it out at this point.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald, Councilwoman Schubert?
Yeah, um, I'm definitely interested in learning more, I think especially if we, we don't have a say over the thirty units, that that can be built no matter what. Um, traffic is going to be a, an issue if that gets built, one way or another. Um, but I do, I'm glad to hear that traffic studies will be done and ways, we, I definitely want to make sure we do everything we can to mitigate traffic. Um, with that too, when I was reading through the planning commission notes, something I noticed and appreciated, one of the commissioners saying, I can't remember who right now. Um, you know, it's, there is something to be said about people locally living here, helping design, really wanting to work with, making sure it fits the neighborhood and fits the feel and the atmosphere of the neighborhood, um, versus another developer coming in and building, you know, kind of just saying, well, we're going to build what we're going to build because we can build this here. You know, we don't want to work with you and I really appreciate your willingness to work with and come, go back to the drawing board and come back and, you know, your continued openness to finding creative solutions to problems, so would definitely like to hear more details.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert, um, and I agree with my council members about moving forward. You know, the concerns, traffic, um, tree preservation, what the landscape looks like, uh, very interested in the transition um, from the existing neighborhoods and beyond. Um, I do recognize height is a concern, height is always a concern when you talk about adding, um, large structures. It was a concern when we added, um, the venue, uh, how high it was going to be, and that was in a downtown, and now we're talking about what the height is, so, um, is there a consideration to continue to do a two-story apartment building? I don't know if that's an option, and then change up some of the mixing, because I under, the, the mix. Um, because obviously, um, there's a financial component to it, so I, I understand, um, I understand the units, but three stories, uh, is that, you know, and it's on a hill, does that, does that transition work in that location? So if we could just explore that a little bit, um, I'd be interested in that. But I think, you know, I do think kind of that revitalization of that corner is exciting. Uh, I think it helps, um, the continued, uh, growth and reinvestment in that area of Chanhassen, which is exciting. Uh, so I, overall, I support it, I just, uh, I'd like to see that next stage and some of the design elements, uh, that go with it, so. And I appreciate you bringing up that point, Councilwoman Schubert, because I felt the same way. It is nice to have somebody local, we've, we've had that in the past, and it does, it does benefit the, uh, the community because it, it matters to you, I mean, three generations sitting here tonight is important, and I know the, the longevity of, of what that property means is something to impor, is important to you, and we have a number of residents in this community that have been here for as long as you, Mr. Hanson, and love it and care deeply for it, and that's why generationally people stay. And that's why we say we're a community for life. People kind of chuckle when we say that, but we really mean it, and, um, that's the motto that we live by, so it's, it's great to think that, you know, you're going to continue to invest in the community that you live, so that's a important piece. But the pieces have to be right, it has to be right for that neighborhood, it has to be right for the city, and I think when we get to that next stage of the PUD with the feedback that you hea, heard from council as well as uh, the concerns coming from the planning commission as well as the residents, uh, is very important to consider, and then knowing that it will go back to the planning commission and council again for further feedback from our residents is important and, um, and continue to move through this process, so.
We do need a motion, but I just want to again clarify, they are allowed today twelve units an acre by right, so that was the forty-six, and I want to correct that again, so it's forty-six, yep. So, um, I, so I want to make sure this motion matches, because what I'm hearing you say and, um, is that you want to move forward, but you've got, laid your expectations, the height might not work, you know, the mix might not work, but you're willing to, um, move forward and have them work through the designs?
Yes.
So hopefully, let me see if this, I think this, um, this is what the planning commission recommend, but, um, approve the direction of mixed housing types, so you're willing to look at that a, as long as they're addressing the concerns that were brought up tonight. Is that fair, what it's, the motion's stating right there?
I think.
Reflecting?
The issues and concerns in the planning commission's staff report, and, as well as the comments tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, Councilwoman Campion?
So this is not approving a PUD by any means, right? This is allowing it to move.
That's no legal standing, it's, it's really to, and in good faith on both parties, you know, they said they're, they want to work and they're working with the neighborhood, and you've given the direction that you want, so it'll be in the next iteration that you, and you still have the, um, discretion there too.
And do we have any timing on this?
Want to hear it back?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay.
It's up to now.
Okay. To that, okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion. Make the motion that the Chanhassen City Council approves the, uh, direction of mixed housing types, issues and concerns in the planning commission staff report for the concept plan unit development and comments made by the, uh, city council in tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. And Ms. Anderson, will we have anything on our website for this project to follow?
Yeah, we, we can put it out there, if people want to add comments to it, or if they give us updates, we'll certainly be, um, set something up that people can follow, for sure.
Okay, that'd be great for, you know, neighborhood, and if you're in touch, Hanson's with some, if you have contact information, if you could communicate that there'll be updates provided on the website, and if there are residents here um, in that neighborhood, we'll make sure that as we move the process, you can sign up for emails to stay informed and, um, so you're aware of the next planning, um, planning commission meeting, so you can provide feedback at that time. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, next we have, uh, the request for agreement for the issuance of building permit before demolition of an existing house.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, so this, um, um, is not really a formal application, it's something that was requested by the property owners, um, so, uh, there's an applicant here representing the family owners, um, of the property on, um, Washita Bay Court. So the applicant is requesting to, um, keep the existing house as they're building the new house. And typically, um, the city doesn't allow, well, we don't allow two houses on one lot, but, um, in this circumstance, um, they've requested, um, we don't really have a normal procedure for doing this, so it was just an ask at the city council. So they would like to build their new home, which meets all standards of, um, the city code, uh, but they also want to keep their existing home, which is right here, they want to keep that home in place while they're constructing their new home, so that would, uh, avoid the cost of renting during construction and they'll remove the new, the old home once the new home is, uh, finished, and they're willing to offer escrow to ensure, so the staff has a couple of assessments that we'd like to just run through with that, so. We understand and appreciate the owner's desire to remain the existing home, um, we've had people, uh, want to do campers and like, which we don't allow. Um, but, so the ordinance, um, requires the removal of the existing house before construction to ensure compliance with the code, so we do not end up with two homes on a lot. So the city's entered into, uh, this agreement three times, um, in this, in the similar situation, in one instance, the dwelling was not removed. As you know, it's probably, um, even if they put security, it's kind of owners for the city go on private property and take something down. So, um, the city attorney has noted that, um, that due to the issues with non-compliance, other cities no longer do this, so, but we have done this in the past, so it's something that you have, um, the discretion to do. to do. So they've shown how they're gonna get through on the driveway while they can keep the existing home and then they can make it work during the construction period. And so if you are going to proceed with this, the staff has looked at some conditions that we want to put on there, that the building permit would, would not be issued unless the new home complies with all the zoning requirements. And the certificate of occupancy for the new home will not be issued until a demolition permit has also been issued for the old home. That doesn't mean they'll happen sequentially, but we require them. So the owners would have 30 days to move, remove, to move into the new home or demolish the existing home upon issuance of the certificate. Again, the control point, and that might be a little loose, but again, the owners would provide the city an escrow for 110% and the estimated cost of demolishing the home would be held until the demolition is complete. So those would be our recommendations if you were gonna go forward. Again, there's a motion if you do choose to do this, but you may want to discuss it amongst yourselves.
All right, perfect. First of all, council, do you have any questions for Ms. Anderson? And then if you have any questions for the applicant, obviously he is here and can answer those. But any questions, Councilwoman Ream?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is there going to be any kind of timeframe established?
Well, we just did that, you know, sometimes these houses are depending on the size, this is not purely our child.
It could take nine months to a year.
It could take a year.
There you go. It would probably take a year, yeah.
Okay. And is that something we could write into this or is that not recommended? Just so, you know.
I would ask the city attorney on that, if there's a, if you'd put a timeframe in it.
I don't think that that makes a lot of sense, only because I think that it's subject to so many things these days. Supply issues, labor shortage issues. I think they'd be back asking, if they absolutely needed it.
The nexus is really, once it's done, that the other one gets removed, it's on so much timeframe, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McDonald?
Yeah, in reading through this, I have a question. Okay, we've done this three times and one time it looks as though we got burnt. What did we have to do to enforce the agreement? How far did it go?
I, you know, I was here, but yeah, I'm not sure if we put escrow on or not, but I don't think, I think the city was reluctant to go hire somebody to pull down a structure on somebody else's property. I don't think that's in best practices.
Okay. That's my concern is the follow-through on all of this, because, you know, as I read through, in some places, people will give up the escrow so they can keep both places for whatever purposes. I'm kind of in favor of doing this, but at the same time, I also want to make sure that we have all the assurances and all the legal, I guess, pieces in place so that if you decide you like your old home and you could give it to the in-laws or something, we now have a method to go forth and the home's gonna come down. We'll, we'll take you to court. And my thought in all of this is that I think 110% of the, of the escrow for the demolition is not enough. I, I want to see legal fees built into all of this also. I want to make it, I want you to be able to do it, but I want to make it as painful as possible if you don't follow through on the agreement. And unfortunately, I'm doing this because I've read enough about, not just here, but other communities have evidently had problems with this, and it seems to always come down to enforcement. It always comes down to, you know, getting someone to live up to their agreement. So that's, you know, how I would be in favor of moving forward with this is that there are enough assurances in there that all of the city's costs of removing the home are covered.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. Councilman Campion?
I have a question for Ms. Anderson. If the homeowner wanted to subdivide this into two lots, and I'm just saying, if he did, is there anything other than us that would be stopping him from doing that?
I think that they may need some variance, because it's a narrow lot, so to get that secondary lot, to get the width without frontage of 90 feet at the street frontage, they needed variance, so I can't prejudge a variance, but they would probably need a variance, but they haven't chosen to do that.
Okay. And, and I mean, that's just where I'm, I'm coming at this from, like, if, if the intent was really to keep two homes there, I've just seen some of the funky flag lots and, you know.
That's kind of what would be, that's what would be for flag lots.
Things like that, where I would think if they really wanted two homes, they could just go for two homes without having to fight the city over not tearing down the other one after they're done with the new one. So if the intent is really to do this, I have, I mean, I understand putting, you know, some teeth into it, but I'm, I guess maybe optimistically not as worried about that because I would think if the intent was to get two homes there, that that might be a more straightforward path.
Didn't they pursue that initially?
They inquired about it.
Okay.
And they said they needed variance and they chose not to go for the variance. Could they do an after-the-fact variance? I suppose they could try to come back and say, well, now we're gonna keep it, we're gonna go for the variance, so.
Okay. Would the spokesman like to come forward? You've been here all night, you made as well.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't have a sexy brewery. Getting filled by Kramer and Sons, one of my competitors. I work for Denali Custom Homes, I'm not the homeowner. I do permitting, project management, all that for them. I've been working with the city on this. We did pursue subdividing, my client, technically the Glazes, pursued subdividing and then they found out, just didn't work. It was gonna be too many hoops. They loved the lot, they kind of really only wanted to subdivide so they could make some money on the existing structure, to tell you the truth. So we forego, forewent that, we went through permitting and everything, and basically they're just asking to stay in their house while we're building a new one. Whatever you need, honestly, I mean, if you gotta, if we've gotta sign something that says we'll pay your attorney's fees, I've given the city already a signed contract with the demolition company to demolition this, we know what the number costs, we know we're gonna give you 110%. We can write a binding contract with the demolition company that proves that it's gonna get demoed. I can pull the permit ahead of time if you would like. I mean, as long as you'll let me float a demo permit for nine months, I don't really care. The 30-day thing, I think, is perfectly reasonable. It's gonna cost them 60, 80 grand to move out of their house, to build another house on a piece of property they already own and paid taxes on. We're saying that seems a little ridiculous because of an enforcement issue once in the past. We build a lot of stuff in Chanhassen, we're working with you guys on a subdivided property as well on Fox Hill. We're not going anywhere. They're not going anywhere. We're just gonna knock the house down when they're done. That's kind of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Any questions for the applicant? I don't think so. Thank you. Appreciate it. And so in terms of, I appreciate your comments and willingness to, and as you said, sign whatever. If we move forward with approving to allow this, or do you want some of those specifics tonight?
I think I would say you'd move forward, have the city attorney draft something.
Okay.
If that makes sense, Andrea?
We have a draft here, but I would certainly revise it to reflect your conditions.
Additional, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And add the requirement that they would pay the city's attorney's fees in the event that we need to enforce it.
Okay. I think, I mean, I appreciate that. I know that the agreement is in here, but adding Councilwoman McDonald's comments about the legal fees, if there, if there needed to be any other additions that anyone had? And could I ask a question in terms of the homeowner unavailable to come tonight or just asked you to come in place?
They just, we've been dealing with you guys, so they've just asked us to come in.
Okay.
As their representative.
If you could just stand, come forward so we can hear you, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, they just asked, we came, we've been working with you guys on this whole thing, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So with the addition of Councilwoman McDonald's comments or request for legal fees, any other additions, any further concerns or emotion from anybody?
I just want to clarify my comments, okay? It's more than legal fees. You understand all of that.
Yes.
Okay, good. Because, yeah, there's also a cost involved in taking anybody to court, so that needs to be in there also. Okay, then I'm fine. If you want, I'll make a motion and I can add all that in.
Can I make a comment before you go ahead with that, Mayor and council? I just, perhaps for the record, since it looks like we're moving in the direction of approving this, I want to make sure that we're clear on the record in case we have to come back to this. Not in an attempt to change the direction we're headed in, but just to be clear, if you give them this approval and they choose not to demolish the home on their own, within 30 days of being issued this certificate of occupancy, the city would then go out, hire a demolition contractor and pursue demoli, excuse me, demolishing a private home on private property. And the only reason I want to say it that clearly is that would be very unusual. And so if this takes a year or two years and we have different folks sitting up at this dais, I just want it to be in the minutes so that it's very clear that when you approved this, you understood that that was a course that we would be willing to take. We wrote the agreement to ensure that the city had that right and protection in terms of costs, and if we end up in that position, we indeed intend to act on it.
Well, I think you're missing a step.
Okay.
After 30 days, you're not just gonna go and demolish the house, you're gonna take them to court and you're gonna get a judgment based upon the contract that they signed and you're gonna enforce the contract. So it's not that the city has decided we're gonna enter onto private property and start tearing down a house, we will enter into property that we're allowed to enter into and tear down a house.
Yes.
And that, that's why I say I want this to be painful enough that the homeowner will not force the city to do that. And I understand that that's the position we're putting the city in, but as the City Council, that's the position the city should be in so that it can take that action, because we are granting a waiver to what our ordinances are, and to do that, we should have assurances that that waiver will be upheld. So I just want to clarify you there. I, I agree with you. We will tear the house down, but not after 30 days, we'll take them to court.
Yes, I was, yes. Thank you, councilmember. And I just think that that's helpful if there are different people trying to examine our intent, two or five or how, you know, however many years or not years from now, that there's a little bit more dialogue about our intent. So I appreciate those additions too. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
So the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, have they commented on this? Has there been any feedback? Because I'm wondering what that's going to be like for...
I think the only comments have been that the house is going closer to the lake and view, view protections.
Mayor and council, we did put one of our proposed development signs on the site because this isn't a process that we go through ordinarily. There wasn't a process to follow, but we did make the determination that we should notify neighbors in some way. So that sign went up at the beginning of last week. So we, we know that they've had the opportunity to understand this.
So we've had a few calls, again, that most of them about just the view shed that's changing because the house is really closer to the lake, which is...
I was gonna say, which is a, I mean, they're permitted to build on their own property, so, okay. Right. Yep. Any other questions, comments, concerns? You know, I, it's unfortunate, I know the, you know, the homeowners have worked with city staff, but it's a big ask of city council, so it'd have been great if they would have been able to attend tonight, address council and make the ask for themselves, because it put, it is putting the city in a challenging situation. Obviously, we want to allow property owners to, you know, live in their house and we understand the situation that they're in. But it does, long-term, present a potential, very difficult or challenging situation. And so that's why there's, while we want to support what the resident wants to do, we also have to protect the overall city and what other residents then, when they look at this, what they think that they could do on their property. So that's why we just have to be very careful in this consideration. And so if this is something that gets approved, I do hope that you communicate to the homeowners the seriousness of this, of this topic, this issue, that the, the council in moving forward, if we choose to do that, is really putting faith that they're gonna follow through on their commitment to demolish the house and, and it's not gonna happen in a few years that they're, you're gonna come back and say that they're gonna keep, you know, keep the original house. So if you could just make sure that that's communicated, that would be...
I absolutely will.
Very much appreciate it.
We don't want to enter in as the builder into anything that would jeopardize us and the city as well. So we have a little bit of leeway in terms of, it's my excavator, it's my demo company that we put forth and, you know, have our contract with, so we will make sure to, you know, this is the step forward that they have, if this is the way that they want to do it, and we will make sure they understand that this wasn't a, a simple rubber stamp situation.
Okay. All right. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councilman McDonald?
I'll propose that the Chanhassen City Council approves the agreement allowing owners to stay in the current home while a new home is being constructed at 2961 Washington Bay Court with the addition of additional comments concerning restrictions and guarantees discussed at City Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Well, Jerry left unfortunately, but, he just left. Any council presentations tonight? Well, I wish Jerry was still here, but if you could communicate to him. Well, just want to, on behalf of council, thank Jerry and all of city staff for their hard work and amazing execution of a wonderful Fourth of July, three-day celebration. I think we all heard such extraordinary, extraordinarily positive feedback from, you know, everybody that attended. Great numbers, fun events, just a, a fun, another fun event that was executed perfectly. And so we appreciate, we know how much time it goes into planning the event from the city's perspective and then to just to have produced such wonderful results is amazing. Also to the Rotary and all of our business partners in Chanhassen, thank you for, you know, their continued support of the Fourth of July celebration. It's the biggest event that we do in the year and, and one that we do really well and it's always a huge success. So please extend council's thanks and appreciation to all of staff and Carver County Sheriff's Office and Fire Department and everybody that was there. So, and again, congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you.
Lori.
That's a great picture, by the way.
Isn't that great? You looked like you were having fun. Anything administratively?
Mayor and council, you'll note that there's a response from Republic Services in the council packet and in speaking with their municipal sales manager, he was really able to provide good data about what's going on in Chanhassen and clarified that from their perspective, the, any service issues that they are experiencing have to do with yard waste, and you can read the letter where he talks about the approach that they're taking. He has committed that he will share service updates with us, and so if people reach out to us, we'll have that additional insight. I think the biggest thing, the biggest takeaway here would be if residents are experiencing trash or recycling, they need to follow up directly with Republic so that Republic has that data. And as I speak with residents going forward, I'm going to be trying to understand if it's really a yard waste issue or a trash and recycling issue, and we will continue to share that feedback with Republic.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for following up on that and I was happy to see their quick response, so appreciate that. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Thank you, Councilman Campion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. We are adjourned.